Okay, we're gonna start the meeting here. Kim's not with us tonight, so I'll run the meeting. Call the meeting to order for the selectmen's meeting for the town of Acton, Maine for October 28th, 2020. First item is salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, united, in the mission of justice, law, and justice.
Thank you. Okay. Town Administrator Weekly Update. Jen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. So, just a couple of things to go over tonight, as we really have been focusing on the election piece of it. And I just wanted to start and talk a little bit about the election and a few things that we have going on, just as a reminder. First of all, I just, right before we came into the meeting, I ran a report, because I thought it would be interesting to see how many absentee ballots we had when we last elected a president, which could have been in November of 18.
Sixteen.
Sixteen, sorry. We had 216 absentee ballots for the last presidential. As of today, we are up to 764.
Oh, my.
So...
How many, how many voted in the last presidential election?
Twelve thirty-one.
Twelve thirty-one?
Yeah, something like that, right around...
You're more than halfway there.
Because our presidential, you figure our petitions are focused on the 10%, and that's right around 1,200, so...
Wow.
Yeah, but you know, it's interesting, because so many of the people that have come in, a lot of them are new voters in town, so it's, we've been beyond busy. I was gonna say that, we are buried, we're doing our best, but yeah, so up to 800 absentee ballots, that's, that's huge. So, speaking of absentees, I know that, I had told you guys once before, or when the process was going on, that the Secretary of State's office offered an 80/20 match on a ballot box. And unfortunately, by the time the grant got through and we were awarded it, they then had to go out to bid with companies in the state of Maine, and they had to award it. So, it was nice to see that a local company in Newfield, is it Humphries? Is that the name of it? I think they sell, they sell something else, it's a...
Oh, they don't want to sell the big barbecues.
Do they do broilers, or...
The barbecues.
Barbecues, that's what it was. So, Humphries, I think Humphries got the bid for the ballot boxes, which was, you know, kind of neat to have somebody in the area. So, we got one, and we're only paying 20%. It came in late Monday. So, and it's a, it's a, you know, a steel cast fabricated, a really nice box, immediately reached out to the maintenance man, and the problem is, is that the Secretary of State's office has guidelines on how it has to be installed, I can't just put it outside. You know, we're having to dig down into the ground, it's gotta be bolted a certain way, so we've had to get pressure-treated wood that you see out there, and Jonathan's been working on. It's gonna be installed tomorrow, hoping not to get too much slack from the voters seeing it up three days before election. I mean, it's, it's something, you know, it's something we're gonna be able to use year round, we can use it for taxes in the off-season, and we can use it next year, but it is gonna be going in tomorrow. But as, as of the 764 ballots that we have out, we only have 425 returned. So, there's still over 300 left, and they have to be back by eight o'clock on election day, so maybe it'll get some use, but I hope you like the spot that I picked for it. I had to put it somewhere in camera view, so it's kinda, it's gonna be kind of almost right in front of the flagpole, right up against the, you know, it's not gonna touch the walkway. We were gonna put it towards the end of the building, but, you know, we kinda waved to the cameras, you really can't see it, so if something happens, we wanna be able to. Anyway, so that will be up tomorrow. The next item, I just wanted to touch base regarding cleaning, we had talked about doing a deep cleaning in the building that needed to be done. Service Pro came in on Monday and spent about six or eight hours here, I guess, doing everything, and that's a long time for just the lower, lower level of the building. Gives you an idea of how much they did from the, they did every single light fixture, the ceiling, the walls, you know, just the areas that our everyday cleaner might not get. So, they did, to say that we had a problem with mice and ladybugs. They said that they found a few holes in the wall that they recommended you're patching up, and obviously, you know, the candy dishes and stuff that we all leave out not to, because apparently there was a nice collection of Hershey Kisses in one of the holes. So, they, they worked really hard to do that. They were supposed to do the upstairs tomorrow. I did reschedule it to next Thursday, because I really can't afford to lose a full day's work before the election, so by next Thursday, we'll be looking to have half a day off, so we'll do the upstairs next Thursday. I had to go back and review some of the minutes on what we decided to do with the selectman meetings over the next couple of weeks, and I think that I might have set it backwards than what I had, had hoped for, so I'm gonna read you the notice and see if it works for you. So, "The Board of Selectmen will not meet the week of November 2nd due to federal and state elections," so there'll be no meeting next week. "The Board of Selectmen will change their Wednesday, November 11th meeting to Thursday, November 12th at 6:00 due to Veterans' Holiday." And originally, I had posted it, we had talked about it the other way around, so no meeting next week, we'll meet, we can't afford to go two weeks, so Veterans' Day we're closed, we'll meet at 6:00 the following Thursday. Does that sound all right?
Yep.
So, we'll get that posted everywhere. We have come to...
There's no conflict with, with the...
Plan board? Shouldn't be, because it should be the, they're on, what, second and third? Right, first and third? Yeah, so 12th would be available.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we have to get in our mindset of checking that now, because it's not, not something we've done. So, Boston Kane, we have finally come to an agreement on who the, not an agreement, we've got some unfortunate information for one individual that has led us to great news for another individual, so we knew who our Boston Kane recipient's going to be, so now we just kinda need to talk, talk about what that looks like for you guys, and how you want that handled. The, I mean, is it, is it possible with the work schedules that you guys have to, I mean, I kinda hate asking her and the family to bring her out at 6:00 on a Wednesday night. I mean, she, you know, I'm sure I could, but I didn't know if we had any flexibility with a, you know, a noon time celebration with the Acton Chapley, one of those people that...
Historical society.
Historical Society, something, you know what I mean? Something like that, or, I mean, or we could do it at 6:00, we could change the meeting to 5:00. I just, you know, I don't know how late someone in their 90s wants to come out, and we wanna do a little presentation, and just keep it to, I think what we'll do is run it live, if it's okay with you guys, and maybe keep it to a couple of people from the Acton Chapley Historical, the individual and, and family. And certainly, if anybody from the public, you know, has an interest, you know, but...
Does this individual have any concerns about coming up here at all?
So, the individual does not know yet that they are the winning recipient, have you told them?
Because that might be one thing we might wanna make sure, that she has no issues coming here in the first place.
She will come up.
She will?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, she's a, she's a go-getter, and she'll wanna come up.
Okay.
I just didn't know if the time, I mean, do you want me to ask her first, what kind, what time of day? Do you guys have any flexibility?
I would say probably check with her and see if, yeah, I mean, 5:00 would be fine with me.
5:00 would be better than in the middle of the day?
That'd be better than noon time, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll reach out to her, so we're thinking, maybe the week of November 16th before Thanksgiving, try to get something scheduled that week sometime.
Mm-hmm.
And do you think that I should do it like on a Monday at 5:00 or something, rather than during a selectman's meeting?
If you're gonna televise it, we, we could, we could make it a non, you know, do it as a non-meeting, yeah.
That's what I thought of, get less of a group, I mean, a group of people here that...
As much as I'd love to have people in the audience for it, if we could just maybe do it with just her, family, and us, and just have, you know, like I say, have no meeting, we could do it almost anytime, we could do it a Saturday morning.
Right, and then you wouldn't be taking away too many business of the residents.
And just, yeah, and just, you know, and then just keep airing it.
Okay, Saturday morning might be good.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's probably the way to do it.
Yeah, and we could even, we could even air it here on a selectman's meeting, you know, just one night, just a quickie, you know, put it up on the screen.
All right, so maybe...
That, that way there, too, it kinda limits the exposure from the outside.
For her, yeah, I mean, we can, we can not open it up to the public.
Yeah, not open it to the public, but just, we'll just do the, do the ceremony and, yeah, have it, have it either...
And I think the public would, you know, would...
Yeah, I think they'd understand in that case.
Yeah, and if there is money, once we announce who it is, if they, anybody that has ties to her, you know, they certainly welcome some, just not a... All right, and the last thing I wanted to mention was, because you got emails regarding it, that, so we talked to a couple of residents, let me rephrase that, we talked to a couple of people a couple of weeks ago about moorings and ordinances, and it was a recommendation of the board to possibly start a petition to move forward, if that was the direction that they were looking into. Somebody watching the film questioned the residents, questions the individuals being residents of the state of Maine, and, and to be completely honest with you, I mean, I never even thought of that when we were having the conversation, it didn't, but I don't, I, I've since looked into it, and don't believe that the two are residents of Maine. By Maine state law, to circulate a petition in the state of Maine, you have to be a resident, you have to be a resident of Acton, but you have to be a resident of the state of Maine, so...
And I, I've gotta mention, too, there, that when the individuals came up and spoke the other night, I had asked them if it was dealing with the Peacock...
You asked them what?
I asked them if it was the Peacock issue that we had, you know, Peacock Road, and he told me yes, but he must have misheard me, because it wasn't, I was mistaken, I thought we were talking about a different issue that we had a couple of years ago, and it was the Hawk Road issue, so I wanna correct myself.
Okay, yeah, because it was, right.
Because when I asked him, you talking about the Peacock Road issue, and he says yes, well...
But it wasn't.
We were talking about two different things last night.
Yeah, the other corner of the lake.
Right.
Different side of the lake.
So, what I will recommend to these property owners, because there's still, you know, property owners in the town, is that, I mean, certainly they can reach out to neighboring neighbors that might be year-round residents, they can always come back to the board and talk to you, and, you know, that kinda shifts, you know, shifts it back in your play, because you still have the, the opportunity, if you so choose, to move an ordinance forward to see what the voters say, but that's where that stands. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Okay, warrants and bills, I've signed, I think you've signed, Dave?
I've also done.
Yeah, I think I saw what Kim had signed as well. Okay, approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda for October 21st.
Yeah, I'll second that. Any discussion? During that, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Minutes of the last meeting?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting.
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion on that? During that, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay. Department heads the committee chair, we have road committee update. Leslie, the floor is yours.
We went over a number of things. We had two applications for Article 43, we went through both of them, we have, all of the documentation is in order. Afterward, the only thing I thought of was the I-9, but I'm sure Michelle will be taking care of that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't think she won't issue any checks until we get that one.
I mean, and Lakeside, I think, already has one on file, so, anyway.
We just granted theirs a couple, about a month ago, right?
Yep.
Lakeside, so it should be on file.
So, on Hawk Road, the road committee voted to recommend that we, we fund the 1744 that they were requesting for their repair, and on Lakeside Drive, they were looking for 3,000, and we recommended that they, you know, that you...
How much did they, how much...
It was 3,000.
Lakeside was 3,000, and I believe...
And Hawk Road was 1744.
Oh, it was 17, yeah.
Yeah. We discussed the...
I'm sorry, Leslie, I think because he, because he, did you, I didn't hear the end rec, did you recommend the full 3,000?
The full 3,000, yes.
Thank you. Go ahead, sorry.
We, we discussed the RFP for stream crossings, we had applied last year for West Shore Drive. Our, I think our numbers were just really shy of getting funded, so I've, we've been working on getting that redone, almost got it done. There's a few things that we, we did this year that weren't done last year, like we've talked to the Army Corps of Engineers, and I've been trying to get ahold of Inland Fisheries and have yet to get a return phone call, but, you know, we're, we're doing a couple of extra things this year to bump our score up a little bit. So, the amount of funding has actually gone up, instead of 95,000, it's now 125, so hopefully we'll, you know, we've done enough to bump our numbers up, and that, I think, might be ready to be submitted next week, so we'll just keep our fingers crossed in that.
Exactly. Good, good work. Thank you.
It's been a lot of work, I mean, it's really, really, uh...
Yeah, thanks for that.
We had a discussion on Canal Bridge and the Wakefield presentation. The committee did vote to recommend that we move forward with whatever needs to be done to the town meeting, and with whatever the selectmen need to do, so we're on board with that. We were curious about if, Jennifer, if you were able to, and I know you're busy, the snow and ice class, if, you know, and if we're even able to schedule one, the snow and ice class?
Yes.
I haven't, I'm sorry, did somebody, the last, though, I, I think, and refresh my memory, if I, the last, there was correspondence about whether or not people would be interested, and we sent those results over, they never, no one got back to us on a scheduled date.
Okay, I wasn't sure if I should try to schedule it or not, I mean, I, I wasn't sure where, you know, what parameters I have in order to try to do that, if the selectmen were even allowing us to hold something like that in the hall.
Well, we talked, we talked about it the other night at the meeting, and I know we talked about having certain things in the town hall, as long as it was town-related...
Town-related, business-related.
Town-related, business-related, yeah, with the town.
Probably be able to do that, but we would discuss that tonight, and see if, you know, 'cause with all the new development, developments that's going on right now, it might be a really good idea to have somebody come down and do a presentation about what direction we should be going in and not going in, so...
And, and, I'm sorry, not to, so the last, I mean, and I'm just looking through my emails, so the last time we heard from him is when we sent, when he sent the email out asking if anybody would be interested, and it was a, like, of a generic number thing that we sent back to him, right? He never, I'm not sure that they've put anything together since then, I don't recall hearing anything, but, I mean, I certainly can follow up. Tammy...
Tammy Chamberlain.
Chamberlain, yeah. I can send an email after, like, just ask if it's, if it's being scheduled, or if they're waiting for municipalities, I mean, we did answer it, I think I CC you in it, okay?
It did, it did, it's just that, you know, it's, now that we're coming to, to that time of year, I think it would be a good thing to...
Is that something the board, so we can reach out to them with your blessing, and ask them if they're gonna have snow and ice classes in York County, and, you know, offer to, to host it?
I'd say yes, yeah, and what they figure would be an appropriate amount of people, or whatever a maximum people is for here.
Yeah, we'd have to go by the governors.
Right, yep, yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm, I'm all in right now on that, definitely, I mean, I think this is a benefit to the town of Acton, and, like I said, because of the circumstances, whether or not right now it's gonna affect the way the guys do their roads now or not, but I think, you know, later on down the road, this might be a very good informational session for everybody.
Absolutely, I mean, and certainly to have it taped, so people can go back and watch it, to, you know, if they're not able to attend, to see what was said and what's recommended by the state.
Exactly.
Yep.
So, oop, sorry, is that your last item?
No, it's just, our SMS, we're just looking for an update.
Okay, so, I'll add that to Tammy's email. Tammy often emails me and asks me if he's replied, and she tells me, when I tell her that, you know, he hasn't, and is it something we've done, she essentially says, no, it's just not a priority right now, and, I mean, I think I forwarded the board those emails that she's saying that, I'm not sure what else to say to her.
So, are we, are we okay in, Ms. Berlin, do that, or are you gonna still be...
No, I'm, I mean, we're, she, they're telling us that we're contacting the correct people, but the state is not, just not prepared to do any training right now on it. I mean, if, I mean, we, you know, Michelle and I have gone into the program, and you can see the maps and the layout, you can see all the information that's been added, you can see the road information, but, you know, for the life of us, between the two of us, we can't find where you're gonna import information. Now, if somebody from the road committee, after the election, wants to come in and look at that program with us, I mean, you know, we're all a very smart group of individuals, I mean, it can't, you know what I mean, I thought it would be fairly easy to, to be able to figure out, you know, update H Road, update, but there's just no, and we read the manual, I sent the manual to, to both road commissioners, well, Adam hasn't seen it, but the prior, you know, I emailed it to all of you, there's just no instruction on where that's being inputted, so, I mean, if you wanna look at it with me...
I'd, yeah, I'd definitely look at it.
You know, we can try to look at it together and see, but, I mean, I even brought Michelle in and said, Joe, am I missing, but let me, I'm emailing her about that...
It's just that one stupid little piece that, you know...
Right.
When you, when you see it, it's like, oh, how did I miss that?
Right, and I'm sure it is something like that, but I'll ask her again, I'm sending her an email, I'll CC you in it, and we'll see what she says, but certainly feel free to call me, and we'll come in, and, you know what I mean, and we'll figure out if we can look at it together.
Okay.
What I wanted to bring up while she was there was, not to put pressure on the board in regards to Canal Bridge, but we kinda need to, need to know a direction, that the, what direction the board is thinking in regards to, you know, are you considering a, a special town meeting to, you know, to allocate this money for the purchase of a bridge? Are you still thinking with the road committee's recommendation that, you know, you're thinking next June? I have, I mean, we have, you know, committee seats that, that are expired, that can't be renewed without an open town meeting, we have the salt petitioner, you know, they're obviously waiting for an open town meeting, so you've got some things, but it's certainly your call.
I, right now, I think, when we were talking about the Canal Bridge the other night, and, and what I'm worried about is we still have permit in, there's a bunch of stuff that we've gotta make sure gets done first, I think maybe, you know, the road commissioners and, and, I don't know, some, one of us, or whatever could go up, look to make sure there's not other things that have to be done, when we do this, we wanna do it all at once.
Right.
And to make sure we allocate enough money, that section of road is really falling apart, if you're gonna be paving that little section there, it might be something where we can join it right in and do that little section up at the same time.
It's gonna be done from, is that, what's that, that's...
Right from Youngs Ridge...
Youngs Ridge, right to, right up to...
Youngs Ridge Road.
Yeah.
From there all the way to, which is a long, long section, section, but...
Right.
I don't wanna rush it, but we, you know, they, they're gonna still have to get their permits through New Hampshire, so, you know, New Hampshire Environmental Services, and then we've got...
Does it cost anything to get those permits from Maine?
Well, I mean, this isn't gonna be just a permit by rule.
No, I know, but, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, I mean, we kind of already gave our nod that we're in favor of it, and now with the road committee saying you're in favor of it as well, that was the other piece we were waiting for. Because it's possible to start the permit process, even though we haven't said we're gonna do it, as long as it doesn't really cost us anything.
Well, I think, I think going through the permit process would be beneficial, because there's still other things we could fix anyways.
Right.
So that if we at least get, get the permit process started, get the ball rolling, we still have to go through the Finance Committee, roll through that, and, you know, I, these permits don't just come...
No, I know, they don't, yeah, they don't pop out of the air.
So, what's gonna end up happening is, by then, you know, we'll, we'll be at probably January, but it is something you wanna get DEP looking at now, while they can see what they're looking at, before it gets covered in white stuff.
Right.
So, myself, I think by the time we get the permit in, we get through all of the committees, you're gonna be right in the dead of winter, we're not gonna be able to do anything, it's gonna be, and of course, you're not gonna wanna do anything in, in April, May, roads are shut down, it's gonna be a June thing anyways.
Yep.
So, myself, I think if we can get the permit process rolling, we just gotta decide who's gonna do that.
Mm-hmm.
Probably should be the road commissioner, I, I would think the road commissioner on that side, that would be you and I.
Are we gonna let Wakefield take the ball? I mean, he seemed pretty good at home, but we'll have to do the process.
But remember, but New Hampshire Environmental Services, they gotta take care of that.
Right.
We really ought to be taking care of our part, because there's other stuff, other than just putting that bridge across, because when I met with the bridge engineer a couple of years ago, he wanted to, us to stabilize some of the bank ends, do a couple little other things before we did anything.
Right.
Because of the runoff going down over the canal, into the canal, so that's why I think, you know, and, and if Adam wants to go up there, I'll go up with him, tell him what the bridge engineer told me, what we need to do, and stop figuring some numbers, and, and he can get ahold of, you know, DEP and, and see what we gotta do to get the permits rolling, and, that's where we really ought to be starting.
Right, yeah, no, I fully agree, so...
Do we wanna reach out to Wakefield and let them know that, you know, the selectman, I mean, I think you kinda told him that you were in favor.
Yeah.
That they were ready to get started with that.
Yeah, well, we, we were in favor, but we have, we don't know if the town is yet, so, but we do have money, I believe, in our bridge accounts, though, don't we?
And...
I'd have to, I'm not...
I believe, I believe there's still money in the bridge account, if not, you know, Adam's got money in his regular general maintenance, and we can improve that to go towards any permit, I would think, so...
I wouldn't, yeah, I don't have a clue how much that would be.
I don't believe it's gonna be a lot of money.
Okay.
You know, I mean, but, you know, it's talking to be thousands.
No.
Maybe hundreds of dollars.
Hundreds is okay, yeah, I mean, I'd say if we could get that process started, that also shows Wakefield that we're serious about moving this forward.
And, and I'd really like to see the town of Acton do their part.
Yeah.
I mean, he's already done this much legwork, and I really think that we all want to do our part in good faith.
Right, I mean, he said it would cost 110, and that included the, you know, the, the run-up to it, but, like you say, we've got more on our side to do than just that, so if we could get our road commissioners...
And he's also looking at it a little differently on the numbers, because he's looking at, you know, they, they're, he just looked pretty much material costs, because the town of Wakefield, they hire their employees...
They've got their own highway department, so they're there anyway.
We sub out ours, it's a little different, but...
Right, yeah, we better have some, some solid numbers for...
I would like to see Adam get some sort of package together of what it's gonna cost, maybe have him start looking, call DEP, meet up there as soon as possible, that way there before it snows, and see what we gotta do here, and, and obviously, you have the plans for the project, don't you?
I was gonna say, this might be a good time to, to bring him up.
I was gonna bring him up after Leslie was done, so...
Did you, you met with him, didn't you?
I have not.
Next week.
He rescheduled with me, and then I couldn't meet with him, so we've gone back and forth a couple of times, so I need to sit down with him, kind of go over, see that's done, to give me a better idea.
So, in regards to the bridge, before you bring Adam up, is there anything the road committee, or that I, that you're leaving on our hands to do in regards to starting this project, or, because...
I don't think it's so much in your hands, as it's gonna be in Adam's hands.
The news?
Perfect.
It's...
Let's move on to the next item before that changes.
Ah, it's all amazing.
No, 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 I was making...
It's gonna be more in Adam's hands than it is in Jennifer's hands from the town side.
No, I just, I don't wanna drop, I don't wanna, you know...
Right, no, I don't think there's anything you need to do right now on it, so...
At least, can we let the...
It's gonna be more...
Wakefield, town administrators know that the, the selectmen, you know, that the road commissioner may be reaching out, they're gonna start the projects with some permits, just so...
I would say, yes, on that.
Kinda know that.
I mean, like I say, we still, and make sure, stress the fact that we've still gotta get down approval on it, but, you know, we're at least trying to, trying to work it forward a little bit, so we'll be ready if we get that, so. Anything else, Leslie?
No, that's...
Nope, great, okay, thank you very much for coming up. Wasn't on the agenda, but I wanna bring Adam up, if you would, sir?
Sure.
It's Adam Doliver, this is our new District Two Road Commissioner?
Think you could, uh, pull the...
Yeah, I would think, if you wanna pull that down, so people can see actually who you are, there you go. Yeah, I would think, if you want to pull that down so people can see actually who you are, there you go. Yeah, so, uh. There you go. Yeah, Adam took over for, for Joe, so it is passing, so we appreciate you coming up and doing that.
I appreciate you bringing this position.
Was it a couple of weeks, last week or a week before, we did a meet and greet? It was had two or three or four people come in, talk to Adam and whatnot, so. Yeah, so anyway, I would say, get with Dave, I would say you're going to be kind of instrumental in this too.
Yeah, I mean, I, myself.
You're already happy with him, you said, Dave.
Yeah.
I met with the bridge engineers and everything else from the state, and, you know, they gave me recommendations of what to do and all that.
Yeah.
You know, I give as much information as I can, help you oversee that if you like.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, Jennifer will get ahold of Wakefield, and I know you'll be contacting him and.
Call Brock, uh, who I've been in contact with.
Okay.
And I'll talk to him too, because I'd like to sit down with him, you know, we've been going back and forth, he hasn't been able to, so this way.
Yeah, okay.
Set something up for us the week, and then next week.
Good.
Be great.
Good, good. No, I think that would be good, and I think.
When you meet with Department of Environmental Protection, you're going to want to give them an idea of exactly what we're doing.
Okay.
So you're really going to want to look over those plans and show them what's going to be disturbed and what's not going to be disturbed, and what kind of, you know, you, have you done the shoreline certifications or anything like that?
I have not.
Okay. I mean, I, I can certify, I can do that if we need be, but in the process, maybe we ought to have him do that course.
Definitely.
Now we can get on board with that, because you're going to need that anyways.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Whatever I need to do, glad to take care of it.
Okay. Um, yeah, so that's all set with the bridge side of things. Because we had a possibility of some snow coming in, are you pretty much ready for that?
I got the sander in my truck today, and it works.
Good, that's a plus, yeah.
I got, my two other trucks are ready.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, two guys are going to be working for me, so, main thing is having Sanders ready for this.
Yeah.
We need him.
Yeah.
And I'll have to close everything on in the morning, he should be ready to go.
And I told my guys already, don't even put the wing down, leave it up.
Exactly.
I'm on the fence even putting mine on.
Yeah.
I'm not putting.
You're doing more shoulder work than.
Yeah. No, I'm, we're not putting the wings on Rollinswood, not, not yet.
I'm not taking them off.
Sanders is all ready to go, but.
Not all on, I don't want to take them off, so just don't leave them.
Yeah, no, we haven't put ours on yet, so it's.
The ground's going to be so warm anyways, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if it comes down hard and fast, that's when we really need to do something.
Right.
Um, we've got two loads of salt delivered, so we have material, extra material for this.
Yeah.
So we should be good to go.
I don't know if you were aware, but.
On the agenda.
I'm the liaison.
On the agenda.
And what you don't.
It's on the agenda.
Oh, okay, well, no, what do we?
Well, he's going to fill them all in, yeah.
I told them that they ought to get a couple, you know, an actual load, so they did discuss it with her.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. Okay, great, well, I'm glad you're all ready to go, and once again, thanks for coming on board.
No, I'm looking forward to it.
Hey, thanks. Okay, old business, conflict of interest, legal opinion.
So, per the last meeting, I sent an email to Legal, hello, Legal, Board of Selectmen asked me to pose the following question to you. One of our selectmen is an excavating contractor and often does work in Acton. Is it a conflict of interest for Acton's appointed code enforcement officer to issue permits and inspect his work? On the same note, depending on your response, what if a selectman decides to build their own home or does other work that requires a permit, is it a conflict? Dear Jennifer, conflict of interest is a concept that applies to the decision maker, not the person needing a decision. So, for example, if a selectman needs a permit for any reason from the code enforcement officer, it is not the selectman who may have the conflict of interest, it is the code enforcement officer. But unless the code enforcement officer has a financial interest in the permit, for example, he's an investor on the project, he would have no disqualifying conflict of interest that would prevent him from issuing the permit. If your question is prompted by a concern that the code enforcement officer may be unduly influenced by the fact the selectman is, in a sense, his boss, I think this is speculative and remote. It does not rise to a level of disqualifying conflict of interest without more direct substantial evidence that in fact, the code enforcement officer would unduly be influenced by his relationship. Otherwise, wherever the selectmen have the power to appoint over the code enforcement officer, he would never be able to issue a permit to a sitting selectman for any reason, so it is not a conflict.
Okay.
So, response from Richard Flowellin with that one.
Okay.
So I will forward that to the individual that sent the email.
Yep. Yep, great, thank you. Okay, anything else you want to add on that, Dave? No?
I was wrong, because I thought it would be.
Okay, no good, okay. Okay, move on, D six, that's in the works.
Done.
Done?
We moved it, uh, we called Adam the other day.
Oh, beautiful, okay.
I want to thank Adam for, we bothered him a couple of times, because we had to, uh, the, the town D six, they don't run antifreeze in, they run methanol, straight methanol.
Yeah.
We had a 55-gallon drum of it down to the town shed, we knew it was still there, and it had just enough to do it. I, during my time, I halved it down, and my father spent quite a bit of time getting it running.
Yeah, so it did fire up and whatnot?
Yeah, we pulled it.
Beautiful.
You know, the pony motor, the magneto's not working, there's some other issues with it, but, you know, it's sitting, but, took a four-yard loader, give it a pull, and she finally fired up. So, uh, she is in the shed, my father is very disappointed that, um, back in the day when the agreement was made, that the same people come back and, oh, against their word, so it's down there, so we don't have to hear about it again.
Okay, good, thanks.
There'll be something else.
Yeah. Okay, Article forty-three, applications.
So as Ms. Leslie announced, the road committee made the recommendation, so now we are looking to the board of selectmen for theirs.
Okay, and that was 3,000 to Lakeside.
And seventeen forty-four.
Seventeen forty-four to Hawk Road. Do we hear a motion?
We make a motion, we approve Lakeside for $3,000, and Hawk Road for the seventeen, what was the seventeen one?
Seventeen forty-four.
Seventeen forty-four to be approved.
And I'll second that. No further discussion. I want to thank the road committee for looking into that and making sure everything was all lined up on it, so. Uh, that, I will call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed? Okay. New business, salt bids. My understanding, we had one bid, is that correct?
No.
Two bids, no, that was on the sand.
On the sand.
We usually get two, we get one from the cog, and then we get one from Granite State.
Do you ever try Morton?
They're part of the cog.
Is that part of the cog, okay.
Yep, so in your packet, you will see the price that we got from Granite State Mineral, who is the company that we've used for the last, I'm going to say fifteen years at least. Uh, it's fifty-three, fifty-three per ton delivered. The cog went out, and they got Eastern State to deliver for fifty-seven ninety to, that's to the York County area. Morton Salt is fifty-two eighty-six, that is a little bit lower than Granite State, but.
Where's that, Jen?
All the way to the right.
I'm not finding any of it.
Do you want this?
Got that.
Oh, it's in that black line.
Oh, that's why I can't see it.
Yep, right, yeah, Portland, Maine is under it.
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, a couple of things I would ask you to take into consideration, so fifty-two eighty-six is Morton. Um, there is, according to the treasurer, a five cents addition that you would, you would add on because of the cog to cover their piece, so you'd be up to fifty-two ninety-one, fifty-two ninety-one. For the last twenty years, you've used fifty-three, fifty-three, so you're looking at fifty-three, and what's that, nine cents? So, sixty-two cents difference. Will is not here tonight, but he did ask me to share his blessing in hopes to Granite, to Granite, to Granite State. Just because of the past history and what they've done for the town, I don't know if Adam has any input on the companies.
Happy with your vendor, and they deliver salt over time of session.
And that would be.
I'd like to pipe in on it, because.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to pipe in on this, because, uh, we use Granite State for the nine, ten years that I was in, and, you know, everybody knows what it's like to get salt, every town has a hard time getting it. And one advantage that we're having with Granite State now, in the last couple of years, three years that I was road commissioner, was there's two individuals at Trucks for Granite State, they live in Waterboro. We would always get backloads from them, so that really kept us stocked up. And, um, I think it's a real benefit having those guys coming through, whenever we needed, we got it. So, myself, I would take the recommendation, Mr. Langley.
I definitely recommend keeping it, and they were able to help us out this week.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, do I hear a motion on which one?
We make a motion that we accept the Granite State Minerals bid at fifty-three, fifty-three per ton delivered.
Okay, I'll second it, move to second it, that we award the salt contract to Granite State Minerals out of Portsmouth for fifty-three, fifty-three, any further discussion? No, hearing now, call for a vote, all in favor, all opposed, okay?
Can you sign yours, please?
Yeah.
And pass it down to Ed. Um, I just need to figure out what the estimated tonnage is. I can call Will tomorrow unless somebody knows.
She's going to figure about, about sixteen hundred tons, usually about what, I think they normally figure the last two years, I think. I think I signed the right spot, said accepted by, so, I'll pass it out to Ed.
Need a little conveyor. You hang on a minute, I'll give it back to you, and you can. Thanks. Okay. Loan bids.
From Will, okay. All right, loan bids, so this is for the fire truck that was approved by the voters. All right, so the first one we have is from Kenny Bunk Savings Bank. So just for clarity, so this envelope here, which is in Cheryl's writing, that's sealed, she got an email from Kenny Bunk Savings Bank, and the bid was emailed into her, we haven't seen it. She did reply saying it had to be a sealed bid, they resent another one, so she's got possible duplicate on here, so assuming this is a bid, because it's not labeled on the front, then we're just not going to open that one, because we know it's from Kenny Bunk Savings Bank as well. How you thinking? All right, so the first one, loan amount up to three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred. Kenny Bunk Savings Bank is one point four nine, fixed for five years. There's a $250 loan fee, and there's obviously a lot of fine print to these, so.
Yep.
We'll send them over to the treasurer and have a look at them, we can at least get the basic numbers down. Community First National Bank. Community Leasing Partners, Community Leasing Partners. Interest rate on this one is two point five four.
Jen, what was the interest rate on the first one?
One, what was the first one?
One point four nine.
One point four nine, this one's two point five four. I'm trying to figure out where they're at of. Business card says Manhattan, Kansas. I'm going to assume this is the same thing, I'm not sure why there's two, they're both addressed the same. Two point five four. Oh, they sent one to Michelle and one to me, okay.
That was a duplicate?
Huh?
Was that a duplicate?
That, no, I didn't open Kenny Bunks, because that came via email, no, that company sent two in the same envelope. One was addressed to Michelle, and one was addressed to me. Bitterford Savings Bank. Interest rate, three point four nine. And so far, they've all been five years, which I'm assuming is what Michelle put in the, uh, in the request, three point five nine, ah, three point four nine, four nine, Bitterford Savings Bank.
House mortgage is better than that.
Hmm.
David. From this Partners Bank. Two point five oh. Two point five oh for Partners, which is the bank that we generally use. Kenny Bunk Savings Bank, though, was that, that was the one that was one point four nine?
One point four nine.
I'll pass it, all right, I'm going to open this just to make sure it matches the. One point four nine, all right, so read them to us, Cheryl, we'll quit, in order, lowest to highest, please.
Okay. Kenny Bunk Savings Bank is one point four nine. Uh, the next lowest is Partners at two point five oh. Community First National at two point five four, and the highest is Bitterford Savings Bank at three point four nine.
So with your blessing, we'll turn these over to the treasurer and have something for you the week after next.
Definitely. Thank you. Okay, freedom of information.
I did go ahead and already emailed this to Land Use Department, I think they CC'd you in it, because it's a standard. Charles Cressby Materials Related to Martell Estates submitted by the applicant. Since October fifteenth of 2020, materials related to Martell Estates, which are in the planning board packet for November fifth.
Okay.
Sign that. So Adam, while they're signing that, Will says fifteen hundred was the estimated tonnage last year. David, does that sound like a reasonable number?
Yeah, I thought it was fifteen, sixteen hundred.
So we'll get this sent over to them, do you have a pen?
It doesn't limit us, it just gives them an idea, that's all.
What was the amount?
Fifteen hundred.
Thank you.
Is what he estimated.
Okay, public comment, anyone from the public have anything they'd like to add tonight?
Good evening, Mike Long, Stack Grounded. First and foremost, I'd like to thank for the D six being back on the town. The reason being was, I have the same ambition as Ed and other people do about getting it displayed, hopefully at the fairgrounds. I'd like to thank Mr. Winter Senior for taking care of it all these years. Now, the only other thing I would propose to Ed is, we ought to get a fundraiser.
We're going to do something about that, yeah.
For the building, that would be beneficial, and to bring it up to showman shape, you know?
Yep, yep, well, as far as bringing the D six, you mean bringing the D six up to showman shape?
Yeah, you know, with it.
Yeah, yeah, some of these things, I mean, I'm a great lover of antique anything, especially motorized something or others. Sometimes these look really nice, preserved, and that's kind of how I'd like to see this one, but we'll go with whatever someone wants to do.
Yeah, but we still.
Yeah, clean it up, and, yeah, yeah, definitely.
Fundraising for the buildings.
Yeah, originally, I had talked to Joe Letourneau about it, and he was going to cut our beams, we were going to get, he was going to cut the posts and stuff for it, and we were going to try to do some kind of a timber frame, post and beam type structure.
Weren't they asking for, and those buildings, the sides were removable during the fairgrounds?
Something that, well, just basically a building that had removable sides.
Right, right.
Yes, yeah, yeah, easily removed sides. Um, so, yeah, so we just got to, you need to come up with an idea as to what we, how we want to do it, what do we make it look like, and the fairgrounds was, was all happy about having it down there and making it a permanent display.
So you, when I mentioned it, your eyes lit right up.
Oh, yeah, I just, yeah, I like into things like this, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Um, yeah, well, I'm going to, I'll do a little more research, and we'll see where we can, where we can fly on this. You know, it was a great loss when Joe, you know, we lost Joe, and he couldn't make, make the things that would have been great. But, uh, yeah, so we'll work on that, and we'll come up with something for it, definitely, and some kind of a fundraiser too, so. Stay tuned, folks. Any other public comment? Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay. Announcements, what do we have, anything? We got elections coming up?
A little election next week.
On Tuesday? That's probably the biggest announcement that we'll ever have, and.
I think the, um, the, so the mayor grant, I actually talked to Mr. Neal today, and, I know they gave out their pumpkins and carving kits and candy, and that went really well, from what I understood.
Yeah, looked like, yeah, from what I've.
He said, I want to say he said fifty of Virginia, fifty-ish pumpkins?
Yes.
Sound right?
Nice.
Got a good turnout, now are they, so they were able to take those home, are they displaying them?
There was only ten left, and I, I believe we decided to give them to the school.
Oh, nice.
Okay?
Yep, nice.
Some candy that we have on the door.
Yep.
Good, good.
Considering everything, it went pretty well.
There's no trunk or treat or anything this year, is there?
I don't know, I don't know, I was going, I don't know.
Okay, I haven't heard any more on that, so.
Close Veterans Day, was that Wednesday?
Yep. Okay. That pretty much wraps up that, so. Okay, I have nothing else to add? Anything else, Dave? Okay, got a motion to adjourn, I'll second it, all in favor, all opposed? Good night, everyone, thank you.